Good evening. Call to order the city council meeting for Monday, November 4th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. Call to order the city council meeting for Monday, November 4th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do roll call, this is Lisa's last night as clerk on the council. So for the last, yeah. We like you. You will be sorely missed, I'm sure. You've helped me a lot since a couple of months I've been doing president. You do kick me under the table every now and then. I have bruises to prove it, but thank you for everything you've done for us and for the city. And with that, your last roll call.
Adam Wawuski.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Mark Bittner.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brandt.
Here.
Tim Patri.
Here.
Monty Shimalunis.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Thank you all for that. We can skip over number four because all council members are here. We did have a request tonight to move from public hearing, move over to invited guests first. We'll do the first three invited guests and then we'll come back to the public hearing. So tonight we have invited guests. We have the introduction and swearing in of new Two Rivers Fire Department firefighter, paramedic Hunter Decker. Hunter, I did beat your parents in the elevator. They told they are going to embarrass you tonight. Introduction and swearing in of new Two Rivers Fire Department firefighter, paramedic of Nathan Sikora. And introduction and swearing in of new Two Rivers Police Department Patrol Officer Nicholas Reeve. Chief.
I'm happy to announce we filled both of our full-time positions and we made some excellent choices. The first one I would like to introduce and I would like to get sworn in is Hunter Decker. Hunter is a graduate of Ron Kelly High School. He's also a veteran of United States Army. And he currently is in Lakeshore College finishing up his fire medic program. He's joined today by his father, Brian, his stepmother, Sarah, his mother, Holly, and his stepdad, Mike.
Hi, Hunter Decker.
Hi, Hunter Decker.
solemnly swear that I support.
Solemnly swear that I support.
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of firefighter, paramedic.
Of firefighter, paramedic.
for the city of Two Rivers.
For the city of Two Rivers.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
so help me God.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Good thing he's here.
For paying any litigation.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to introduce Nathan Sikora. Nathan is a graduate from Denmark High School. He's a graduate of Fox Valley Technical College in Fire Science. And he's also a graduate of N W T C in Green Bay through his paramedic and critical care paramedic. Comes with a multitude of experience. He's a former flight paramedic. He's currently in nursing school. And brings a wealth of education to our fire and our paramedic service.
I'm Nathan Sikora.
I'm Nathan Sikora.
solemnly swear that I support.
Solemnly swear that I support.
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of firefighter, paramedic.
Of firefighter, paramedic.
for the city of Two Rivers.
For the city of Two Rivers.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Not in the budget.
All right. I'd like to introduce Nicholas Reeve. He comes to us from Outagami and Kiwanee jails. So he's got a little bit of experience there. I'm told from his childhood friend and lifelong friend Hans that this has been a lifelong goal of his since as long as he can remember. So I'm glad that he's finally completed that goal. We look forward to a long career with him. So with that.
Hi, Hunter Decker. Oh, sorry. I have one of the main things. I solemnly swear that I support.
I solemnly swear that I support.
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
a police officer.
A police officer.
for the city of Two Rivers.
For the city of Two Rivers.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
so help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Give it a moment.
Everybody's gonna mass exodus.
We're going to have nearly a turnout like this for the budget hearing in a few weeks. But if we do, let's up theirs friendly.
Okay. Onto the public hearings for tonight. The first one is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend zoning code section 10-1-15 G4B height and area exceptions to allow produce gardens as a permitted use within front yards. Craig, any background?
This is an amendment to our zoning code. As noted in the amendment that's in front of you, it would modify that section of the code pertaining to permitted uses in front yards. It's actually headed in front and street side yards. The way our zoning code is structured, like many zoning codes, if a use isn't specifically listed as permitted or as possibly a conditional use, it is considered to be not permitted or prohibited. That is the status of produce gardens in the current code. The council is seen fit for the last two growing seasons, '23 and 2024, to allow on a trial basis, a program allowing individuals to apply for and receive permits for placing produce growing areas in front yard areas. Under certain stipulations, which are consistent with what is shown here in the proposed new subsection six, should be noted that produce gardening is currently a permitted use in street side yards. So if you have a corner lot, it's okay in a street side yard as long as it doesn't encroach into the minimum required street side yard. But this would be new in terms of making produce gardens not to exceed 100 square feet in area in raised beds or containers with no vegetation exceeding 100 square feet with height parameters for the raised beds themselves as to how high they can be above the surrounding ground and would incorporate those into the code. So they would be considered a permitted use under these circumstances. The Plan Commission is advisory to the city council on any matters pertaining to amendments to the zoning code on a motion to recommend this, the Plan Commission tied three to three. So it would not be considered endorsed in that advisory capacity by the Plan Commission, but is presented tonight for first public hearing to hear from interested members of the public, then the opportunity for council action on the code amendment.
Okay. Thank you for that. Since this is a public hearing, there will be three calls. If you do wish to speak about this one particular item about the ordinance to amend the zoning code for height and area exceptions, please step up to the podium on your left, state your name and address for the record. I will now open up the first call.
Evening. Andre Robitaille, 2313 Jefferson Street. Just, I didn't look recently, but if the packet has the kind of current suggested stuff, that's really what I'm coming down here. My view from looking at the photos is just simply that the containers look horrible in pretty much every photo. And that, I mean, the things that look like planters, even the ones that aren't plastic, they just kind of end up looking a little bit junky in the front yard. We already have a junk problem in Two Rivers that's pretty bad in front yards and side yards, I suppose. So please don't add to it by allowing planters all over people's front yards. Plastic, fiberglass, corrugated metal, those are not approved building materials basically anywhere else that I'm aware of in residential code. So I think to be consistent and attractive, we should probably not be allowing that for front yard gardens either. I've seen, I've seen at least corrugated metal as one because I know you can buy prefab versions of that. So they don't look great. I would suggest that they probably just be wooden boxes, et cetera. So if you want to make a permanent, here's my suggestion on some adjustments or additions. Enforce the wooden raised beds. Like I said, not plastic or corrugated metal or anything similar. Allow for non-raised beds next to the house with edging. The best looking photos is in a house that wouldn't actually pass code right now because they are next to the house with no edging, not in a raised bed, not in a container. So our best looking photo wouldn't even do it. So probably just have to add edging to that to make that work. Create rules about cleanup deadlines and overgrowth. I didn't recall seeing any in there. And I think that's another way that they can kind of get junky. And this one, which I'm pretty sure you all know I'm going to suggest or talk about, whoever came up with the old canoes and kayaks as planters in the front yard should be banned from writing ordinances in this city. That is horrible. And if it passes, I'm going to pay for all your neighbors to put tons of kayaks in the front yards. Off joking. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, you had the written comments submitted for the record by Ms. Coach.
Yes, do you want to read that in?
If you would.
Yes, absolutely. So this is an email that we all received. My name is Tracy Coach and I reside at 3411 Parkley Boulevard, Two Rivers. I am unable to attend the public hearing tonight. However, I want to voice support for the ordinance change to include produce gardens in front and street side yards. I think when you say vegetable garden, many people envision the traditional plots with rows of beans or other vegetables such as seen in our community garden. However, the proposed ordinance provides enough guidance to limit soil erosion and vegetation that might be a safety concern while also providing the freedom for residents to grow vegetables to supplement their household meals. Finally, the Wisconsin legislature is considering a bill, Wisconsin Vegetable Garden Protection Act, to allow property owners to grow vegetables with, at present, little restrictions or guidance. This is not the first time this has happened. The U.S. government during World War II strongly encouraged residents through a campaign called Victory Gardens to plant fruits and vegetables in their yards and parks to supplement food rations and support the war effort, essentially making it a patriotic duty to grow your own food. By passing the Two Rivers ordinance change, we lay the groundwork for our community control when the state passes their legislation. I'm assuming they will include a grandfather clause, of course. So that is it. Anyone else for this first call? See no one else? I will close the first call and open up the second call. See no one else? I'll close the second call and open up the third and final call. See no one else? I will close the third call and ask the council, bring it back to the council and ask for a motion of some sort. Yes, Adam?
I would make a motion to deny based on the Plan Commission's denial of such and also from residents that I've heard from.
Do we have a second? Honey? Is that a second? Okay. Council discussion. Yes, Mark?
I had a couple of questions. The plant height in this, is that the height from the actual ground level or the base of the base?
It is the total plant height.
If we're measuring it on itself, the whole plant height, base would be part of that height.
The base can be between six inches, 12 inches. And then, because we wanted to maintain the integrity, we want to save bad runoff going into the street. But then the plant itself, three foot, and the philosophy behind that is that at a three-foot height, your tomato plants are still very productive as well as like pepper plants. And there really is no reason to go any higher. And there are some varieties that lend themselves to, you know, controlling their own height pretty well. If you have raised, yeah.
The only, you talked to me about this and I'll share my concern and it was addressed is the planters interpretation of what a planer could be, the individual. I actually couldn't. Balls. Active. I would, Mike, because we don't regulate certain plants. Whatever we do here, it would be a proactive step because it. Demerits. Prior to the state doing it, because if we don't do anything, the state does it, are we trapped into whatever they write?
There's not necessarily any grandfather clause in there.
In my conversations with the legislators, and of course, it's not written in stone yet, but if we, if a community has a program in place or allows it with stipulations, you know, with guidelines, that's going to be good with them. You know, for the communities where no effort has been made to be proactive on this, those are the communities which will then be able to just go strictly by what the state is allowing. So in my opinion, and after talking to some people, it's a good thing for us to be ahead of the curve and kind of cover ourselves.
Adam?
I would just cite that there was not much participation. I think we've run this for two or three years now. I'm not exactly sure if it was two, was it two or three?
We had two the first year, and we had six this year.
Okay. So we're up to six people. There was denial by Plan Commission, which is a citizen board that talked about this. I know for the years even past, they were never really on board with it. And again, that's coming from a citizen board. I would dub off what Mr. Robitaille said, as far as some of the materials that are used. We don't allow them for building materials. They aren't attractive. And that same thing is going to wreck people's land and property values. When you see people that have this kind of appearance and what some people may consider to look like junk, we, like Mr. Robitaille said, we do have a junk problem. We do have a problem with people that can't cut their grass. And this is only going to add to that and add to the appearance and the amount of complaints that we receive for grass and have a hard time really keeping up with. The appearance and land value, I think, is really going to be something that could come into effect in years to come when people try to sell their houses or even try to get a loan and they have to have it assessed. You know, these are all factors that can seriously hurt that. I'm not 100% up to speed on what the state does. I don't know that they grandfather much normally. Again, I could be wrong on that, because, I mean, we've had stuff set here before that when the state made a ruling that they ultimately come in and kind of do what they want, including speed limits and other things that have gotten changed over years, because that's what the DOT said. And other examples, of course, but I am against this. And I've spoken to many people, and by many, I should reiterate that and say, I spoke to about five people over the course of the last couple of weeks. And then I know I've gotten an email, and I think there was an email sent to all of council as well. And then again, there was one sent today from Tracy that was sent to all of council who recommended support.
Anyone else? Yes, Mark?
Clarification. Was it denied by the Plan Commission, or was it a tie vote with no?
It is a denial.
Yeah. I guess you could term it either a denial or a failure to recommend favorably, because it would have required a majority vote to be considered a recommendation to pass.
When I first moved to the community, just so you know, Andre, the city had kayaks on every corner practically, and the city with planters all over. And I was a little surprised. That was an effort to promote our waterfront, and it looked pretty good at the time, but I don't personally like the idea of a front yard garden, but I'm going to vote in favor for it, because if people want a place. And don't like the idea. Personal preference, they could planters on the side of their house, and with the same thing as gardens too. So that's just my thought.
Yes, Darla?
I just want to say, Adam, you brought up the number of participants, and the environmental advisory board's thinking on this is that it's, if there was just one resident that benefited from this, one is enough. We're getting more interest, and I don't see how number of participants really has much to do with it. You've got people who are benefiting from a new idea, and I think that's kind of the point, is that we take care of all our residents, one way or another. They might be, they might not be the majority, but we're not forgetting about them either.
Anything else? Yes, Shannon?
I had coffee with my neighbor down the street, and she was just saying she wants to do the front yard vegetable garden again next year, and she's really looking forward to it and what it's provided for her family, not just food-wise, but educating their child about how food grows and seeing that in action, kind of a family activity for them, and they've really benefited and enjoyed doing that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Adam?
Just lastly, I would point out that we do have a community garden, so for anyone that struggles to find spots in their yard to grow vegetables, you can do so at the community garden. There is room to expand. Parks and Rec Director and Greg Buckley have both said that there is plenty of room out at the cemetery to expand that program for those people that would like to do that. Just to dub off one other comment, I guess, even if there is just one person, we don't really pass stuff based on one person. And, I mean, we can cite ATV, UTV, for example, not to bring up a sore subject, but there is well more than one person that wanted that, and we didn't vote for that, because some people up here felt it was the minority of people. So usually, we do go with the majority of people that want something when we pass something. That's normally what we do. And this does have an effect on neighbors. We've heard from those neighbors. I've heard from those neighbors. So it will leave a lasting negative impact for some people.
Anyone else? Bonnie?
Yes, I should. My biggest problem with this is the rules. How are you putting all these rules into the ordinance? I mean, the ordinance only has one or two sentences, but that page that was presented to us before, that was like two and a half pages of rules. Is that even legal? I mean, if you put an ordinance in and you don't cover all the rules that go with it, is that legal?
It's passed.
Huh?
It's legal if it's passed. All the rules that are attached to the ordinance, yes.
No. They're not in the ordinance, is my point.
Part of the document that was approved for the pilot program was dealing with the application, reporting out after the fact, and things of that nature. So the actual guidelines for the physical garden itself is what you have in your packet, that whole 10 lines or 12 lines. Everything now is in red text in your document, so.
Then you're not going to, if somebody does not follow all the two and a half pages of rules, it doesn't matter?
It's no longer, the purpose of the ordinance now is no longer to have an application process to follow up at the end of the year with a report, as was part of the pilot program. Now it's just like if you wanted to grow native vegetation in your front yard, you're allowed to do so.
Haven't we always been allowed to do that?
As far as native vegetation, correct. Produce gardening in the front yard was prohibited about five years ago. Then it was put back in, then it was taken out, and for the past two years, it's been allowed again. So instead of doing it as a pilot program, we're taking the pilot program out and replacing it with you are allowed to do it, assuming that the ordinance passes, or if the ordinance doesn't pass, then produce, the pilot program will cease to exist at the end of the year, and you will not be allowed to do produce gardens anymore in the front yard.
Adam had one question for you.
So Matt, with the pilot program going out, so there's not going to be any more, this would be more of a lack of enforcement, because we won't have EAB members going to take a look at who has their signs in their front yard, as to who's participating, and looking to make sure rules are being followed, and so on and so forth.
Just like any other ordinance, it would be based on a complaint basis.
Right. So when we had it in the pilot program, we had people that actually monitored this stuff, and they had signs. Now it's going to be more of a free-for-all and go on a complaint basis. So when you're calling in your neighbors, grass clippings being long, you're going to call in something like this then as well?
That is a potential yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
If you want to stay up there. One thing, Matt and I were just having a side conversation on, there are provisions in the code about vision clearance triangles at both street intersections and the intersection of driveways with the right of way. That's not specifically addressed in here, and on a quick look, it looks like the existing language pertains to shrubs, trees, fences.
Basically, screening and fencing. So if you're within 25 feet of an intersection, street intersection, it was no more than two feet high. And if you're within 10 feet of a driveway, it is three feet in height.
So, I'm entirely sorry, and I apologize for that, but if this really is addressed in the existing restrictions that address those vision clearance triangles, or whether it would be most appropriate to modify it. So in addition to the height limit, which is, yes, three feet for vegetation, but if it's sitting in a two-foot-tall raised bed, it gets up to five feet, it could potentially conflict and.
Which means you just couldn't put that vegetation or that planter within that vision triangle.
Right. Or perhaps a modification or amendment of what's on the floor to.
The floor is a denial.
Oh, I'm sorry. That would not be a modification of what's on the floor. We can talk about that after a vote, if need be, but that is perhaps a deficiency of what's in front of you as an ordinance.
I know that when we did the proposal, which was really long, just trying to explain the philosophy behind it in a lot more detail, we did focus on the line of sight, and somewhere along the line, that kind of, so maybe if we reference it, you know, or, I don't know, I think it's a valid, you know, it's valid.
If there's, good point, if there's a different motion in front of the council, we could address that, but that is an issue. But, right, the motion currently is to deny.
Is there a second to the motion, though?
Yes.
Why, we can have discussion, others, you couldn't be in discussion, Mark. Roberts rule of order.
I'm not intimately familiar with the right-to-garden legislation, but I think it did provide, did have a provision that communities could still regulate through their zoning, so whether allowing produce gardens in backyards, interior side yards, and corner side yards or street side yards is enough, kind of hard to predict.
Go ahead, Tim.
I've heard from a couple of people that the government shouldn't be regulating people on feeding their families, growing their.
Anyone else? I see nothing. This will be a roll call vote. Just reminder, since it's different than what we normally do, this is a motion to deny this. Just want to make sure that's clear. It's usually the other way. So, roll call vote, Lisa.
Darla Leclair?
No to.
Art Bittner?
No to.
Shannon Derby?
No.
Bill Leclair?
No.
Doug Brandt?
No.
Tim Patri? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
No.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Seventy-two. So.
On to, or any other further discussion, Greg, on that?
Sean, our city attorney, help me out, is another, I'm not sure anybody wants to make another alternative motion, but is, since the motion on the table is defeated, is another motion, I believe it would be permissible. I'm not advocating.
Would it be permissible if anyone else has a motion they'd like to raise at this time? Otherwise, this could be considered closed if there are no further motions.
Okay. I will open for another motion. Okay. Do we have a second? Thank you, Doug. Any council discussion?
Would this now be the time to also say that we add in some language about this line of sight?
I think we'd have to send that back someplace before we can, right? Or would we have to make a motion to then accept it, but then add in the height that Matt described?
That, I mean, you have a motion on the floor now, right, to approve it, there'd need to be a motion to amend, or the maker and second or the motion could consider it, could offer as a friendly amendment. And Sean, help me out, I don't know that we would be in a position to have specific language, other than perhaps, provided when it addresses height, maximum plant height, you're not going to get in trouble with a raised bed that's two feet tall, it's just when you have something growing in it, that provided in no event shall, shall plants violate any vision clearance triangles required elsewhere in the zoning code. That, if you're going to do it on the fly, that's about the best I could suggest.
At this point, the option would be, like Greg said, friendly amendment to withdraw and amend, or to vote on the motion as seconded.
Okay. So that's up to our, up to Bill and Doug, if they wish to change their motion to include what Greg had said.
So, yeah, that vegetation height be subject, however, to vision clearance triangle, vision clearance restrictions included in other sections of the zoning code. Sir? On a quick look, the existing, other existing ordinance talked about shrubs, trees, fences.
So that should mean?
Right, but actually, that would mean going in and amending that other section. I was suggesting here that specific to the front yard gardens, it reference and any other restrictions. Yeah. Do you have that section up by any chance, Matt? Not how we normally do these things, but sorry, we just caught that. On the front property line, yeah, that may do it at driveways. Here with us. Matt and I are racing to find it real quick. Provided, however, vegetation would not, would not violate provisions regarding vision clearance per section 10-115?
Bill, it's up to you.
I'll accept.
For, for section 10-115, correct? Doug, do you wish to agree with that or change your motion? Back to council discussion. Yes, Adam?
I'll just reiterate, we're doing this for six people, and we've heard from more than six people that don't like it. And we haven't really changed rules ever before for six people, and they've come before us because they weren't in the majority, and it just seems strange that we're doing something like this. And against a citizen board recommendation.
Anyone else? Yes, Tim?
We're not a homeowner as a.
Anything else? Yes.
There is a community garden, free soil, adequate space, water.
There is a community garden, free soil, adequate space, water provided, but it is a drive out there. But it is available for people who.
Starla.
Um, I know we've talked about this in the past, but with, um, the community garden, being able to expand on it would be a great thing. Right now there is no room. And from what I understand, um, you can have up to three plots. So that's one family with three plots, whereas you've got a family that can't get in. And then also, and I'm not sure, I would like to delve into this a little deeper, that some of the plots are being used by people who are not two of his residents. So I'd, I really need to look at that. I think the community garden is great and let's expand on it. Because this is a thing. I mean, you look at the cost of groceries, they're obscene. There's that, uh, the value of being, you know, for health purposes, you know what you're getting, it's healthy, it's fresh. Many, many different, um, different, um, good things that come along with this. But I would like to have a conversation, maybe explore the community garden a little bit more.
Anything else? Yes, Shannon.
Well, I agree that the community garden is a great thing and a great asset. Um, if you're from a different section of town like the south side or don't have transportation time, um, to get out there and take care of it where if you have a front yard garden, it's just right at your house. You don't have to worry about finding bus fare or a car to work or whatever. There's a lot of complications that come with being poor in America. And if we can alleviate this by having some front yard vegetable gardens, I think it's the right thing to do.
Anyone else? See nothing else. This will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
No.
Scott Steckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
No.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Mark Bittner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Doug Brandt?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you all for that. Uh, excellent discussion. Uh, B, we were supposed to have a second public hearing, but tonight we only have the one. There's no hearing tonight on the rezoning of 1509 19th Street. The applicant withdrew their application.
We just wanted that for the record because two weeks ago, the council did set a hearing. We had asked the applicant if they wanted to withdraw their application to please do so by noon on the day of your last meeting, but the very next day they were in touch. So, uh, we were able to cancel the legal ad, refund the applicant's fee. They're happy with it. Case closed.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, on to number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council, uh, about something that is on this agenda or something you want to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. Jeff has been waiting very patiently.
Hi, I'm Jeff Dahlke, uh, 37 27 Adams Street. Uh, there was three or four things brought to my attention this week. One of them was the issue that we had with early voting. And I wish Amanda was here to address that because I know what happened, but other people in the public don't. And it would be nice if she'd be able to put a statement out to people when it happened. Uh, the next thing, that there was a petition that was sent around last week. And there was a sitting council member that went to people that were, had signed this petition, went to their homes, knocked on their doors and told them that they were misled. If that wasn't a big enough slap in the face to these people, they didn't want to come to a meeting and talk. That's why this petition was signed. If that wasn't a big enough slap in the face, said councilman, went on his own and started his own petition. Still saying that these people were misleading the information. I don't know what you guys think, but somewhere, I do believe in section five in public meeting, that is an ethics violation. Plain and simple. It needs to get looked into. People have a hard enough time getting up and talking. And then when you have somebody come up and doing a petition and then they come back at you, that's, that is wrong in every level. Uh, the other thing that was brought to my attention was when there was a light problem, uh, it was light pollution. Four councilmen went there and looked at it themselves. That is a walking quorum. That is a no-no. Am I correct in saying that? Four people is a walking quorum.
I'm not sure that four people's walking quorum of the council, five, a quorum of the council is five. Um, I'm not going to make that judgment though, and our city attorney is with us, but I don't know that he would be prone to an off cuff comment or opinion on that.
What, are there any of them part of a subcommittee?
Don't know.
I don't know who all went.
I wasn't party to the alleged meeting.
There's four of them. Yeah.
Does that still talk to people?
Are you asking, you're telling me that a council person can't go to look at something that somebody's complaining about?
Four of them went together.
Oh, um, okay.
You know what I mean?
I don't know.
We're there at the same time. What's that? Yeah.
We were there at the same time, but there was only four of us.
But it's still a walking quorum.
But. It's five of us.
Five's a quorum, four is a walking quorum.
Certainly would be of a subcommittee. Cause you'd only need two if any of them sit on the same subcommittee.
Went to the person's house as.
Maybe it's, that's Scotty S, the attorney.
Yeah. Sean, have you caught any of that so far?
Uh, yes, I have.
Any comments right now, or is that something we'll have to look into?
At this point, I think, uh, without having further clarification, I wouldn't think we can make that determination. I just want to know if a walking or an everyday forum exists at that point. So I think even with more clarification to make that determination.
Okay, yeah, well then we'll provide the clarification and then we'll let you know.
Just wanted to bring it to attention.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It was brought to mind, so.
Sure, yep, absolutely.
Stand up. Um, the last thing that was brought up to me, uh, a friend of mine got a note sent to them from, uh, apparently the first one was from the arboretum and the second one was for a couple, must have been from the citizen. And there were some issues out there that I wasn't, never even really thought of because the, but at this time of year when the weeds start getting tall, there's no fire break. People are worried about that. There's, uh, people are having a problem with their pets, with, um, illnesses because there's ticks, fleas and everything that had not been.
Is that what you handed out?
Yes, that's everything that is in the handle.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear what you handed out, okay.
But I'm just going to bring this up to, you know, and I think it's something that needs to get looked into. And if it is weeds out there and not flowers, nobody else in the city can have weeds in their yard, why should, you know, even though it is a, if it's all flowers, that's one thing.
There, yeah, I guess I'm, and again, I'm, this is an opinion on the fly, so it's, it's, it's worth all of that. There are restrictions on the height of turf grass. So if you've got fescue or Kentucky blue or common turf grasses, they can't be over a certain, I don't want to say six inches, maybe it's eight. I always forget. If you have weeds, noxious weeds as identified by the state of Wisconsin cited in our code. If you have other native vegetation, not, not regulated generally so much. So it, it varies.
It, it just, they were worried about the fire hazards and then another person that gave me this was worried about there's, she'd never had snakes by her house before like she had this year. Not to mention not just the snakes, but the coyotes are getting to be a serious problem out there. Yeah, she had ten or twelve of them in her backyard at one point. So there's something that needs to get looked into.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. There might be some nuisance ordinance implications there. I, some, somebody else had forwarded a copy of this anonymous correspondence that was directed to the arboretum to me today, but, uh, I've got to say in my time, I've, this is the first time I've heard these neighbor concerns. Not to, not to minimize them, they may be very real, but that's the first I've heard of them.
And especially they were saying that since there's so much irrigation going on, there's some pumps are running constant and there's all kinds of problems that they weren't anticipating when they were told how nice this place was going to be. So I think it might be kind of buyer's remorse somewhat. But there's, there were other things on there, but I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that you guys can look into it and see what's what and how much is fact and how much is fiction.
I did do a quick glance of this. I didn't read through it fully, but there are some questions it looks like they have that I don't know answers to. Um, they may be true, they may be false. Is this something that you will look into as far as permits and all that fun stuff?
Question there about lack of a building permit for building, I don't know that that's the case.
Right, I, that's why I don't want to speak to it. I'd rather have city staff look into that to see if that stuff is correct or not.
We will in so far as it relates to city permits.
Right. Does this become public record?
I think it's.
Because it was handed to all the council.
Presented to city council, I think, uh, and I don't, we can provide a copy to our attorneys, but I, I think it's public record now that it's here and I don't see anything in it that would constitute confidential information. But again, I'm not the attorney. He's, he's on the phone line.
Yeah, so I, I would agree that this is, uh, within the public record. Uh, I can't review, obviously these documents in front of me right now, so I need some time to see if a valid exception exists. Uh, but this would be within the scope of public records. So unless a, an exception under statute or case law otherwise provides, then this would be a, uh, accessible, uh, or inspectable rather, to public record.
Okay. Do you have the electronic version of this or was this, you had the physical copy?
This is what they were given. So I just had at least, or I had.
I think Greg has it.
Greg might have.
Amanda makes some comments.
Okay, gotcha.
Sean, I might even do it, uh, yet during this meeting. See me on the phone, it's official business.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, I think I'm, I saw some Facebook traffic and, and aware there was an issue with, that um, several folks who voted in person absentee were contacted about. I expect that's what Mr. Dahlke's referring to. All I'm going to say on that at this point is uh, city attorneys were consulted on it and have opined that it was handled appropriately under the circumstances and leave that between the voters that were contacted and, uh, the clerk and, and our attorney.
I think what people, when they were talking to me about it, they were more, more worried about, they wanted just clarification because everything had been kind of hearsay when it happened. So it would have been nice for a, a public.
I can just say there's been a lot of staff effort going in to make sure that, making sure that every person who cast a, a ballot, whether it's absentee or in person, that that vote counts. And there's been a very diligent effort to that end.
And because I, I mean, uh, me and Kathy and we're part of a, a one group and we really pushed for early voting and assuring people that there were going to be no problems and it was like, oh crap, then this happened. So that's why we got a lot of calls on it. So anyway, I wanted to bring it up and it would be nice if we get some clarification. We know what happened, but general public does not. So it'd be nice if we could do that.
And everyone has been contacted?
Yes, everybody has either been contacted or a message left for them. And I think there is one person at this point who's had notice posted, but has not, the clerk has not heard back from. And it's important if at all possible, that person's vote count as well.
Absolutely. So if they're listening, please, please get back to the city clerk and get that straightened out for us.
It's all I got. It's just that the very first one was most important because that was rather appalling that when somebody would do that.
Jeff, Janet. Yes, sir.
I want to be totally transparent here. My name's Mark Bittner. I have elected council. And I was the person who went to my neighbors that were on my street and I approached them to better understand. I, I actually followed the petition. It says engage residents proactively, host town halls and not oppose to that. Conduct surveys and actively gather resident feedback. And I thought my role, certainly if someone lives by me, I'm going to be interested to see if they agree to everything on this petition. And I mean, the petition that, uh, short-term rentals are responsible for the loss of a number of things they said are town special major employers were lost because of our short-term rental policy. Stores are lost, restaurants were lost, the pool was lost and even the high school, Central High was lost because of short-term. And now the community itself is becoming at risk as a destination rather than home. I had people who I know told me the other side of the story, like the short. We like it, uh, uh, let me.
Actually, I'm allowing it to him for him to defend himself. Is that okay to do that, Sean, or not?
You know, we, uh, uh, as in, as president of the city council, we control the time structure of the meeting. I see no reason why you cannot, uh, permit that.
Okay.
I've not.
I know, and you know what? We're going to stop it. Cause I don't, we don't need to get into it. Mark, you okay?
So you won't make a difference. That's what I can, you see what I did.
I'd say we want to let it at that.
What?
We'll let it at that for now. I think we kind of, most of us know the situation that happened.
Well, by the attorney, I was legally not in violation of either.
Anything else, Greg, or?
No, I, well, I'll only say that, uh, the city attorney has spoken with Mr. Bittner and, uh, affirmed based on his understanding and I believe in, I don't want to speak for him, but and what Mr. Bittner reported is his behavior, that it was neither violative of the code of conduct for city council or the open meetings law. But again, I, I wasn't there, but based, based on my understanding of what happened, I felt it was appropriate to refer as any council member, uh, as we would with any council member, refer Mr. Bittner with these concerns that were raised specifically about he surmised, I think we all surmised, his conduct, uh, to the city attorney and that consultation took place. So, you know, whether it, I'll be careful because I'm not on council. It may rub somebody the wrong way to have direct contact from a council member. It's not a, it's not a one-way street with public input. If somebody puts their name on a petition, I'm not going to judge the manner in which they were approached, but there's no firewall that says you as individual electeds can't initiate a discussion with your constituents. Maybe I misunderstood what was alleged, but that was my understanding of it and I don't, I think the city attorney would concur. Then none of you should be constrained in that manner.
Thank you. Um, input from the public, anything else?
Hello, my name is Jim Bob Scoot. I live at 1800 Jefferson Street, apartment unit 206, Ventura versus Wisconsin. Um, uh, uh, my, uh, my, uh, question, uh, my, uh, question, um, uh, uh, statement I'm going to make is about, uh, sometimes I see the ci- uh, city cement blocks aren't always done. There have been a few times in the winter where there have been a few cement blocks that haven't been all, all, all done in the, in the winter time. I know they have a deadline, they have to meet those by, but, uh, uh, it, it, uh, sometimes I've tripped over a few, uh, uh, when, when they just have gravel in some of those blocks, if they get all done, you know, if they get, you know, removed, it'd be nice if they could all get done, you know, and, you know, so that, you know, it's safety walk and stuff like that.
Okay.
And then, uh, on, uh, 23rd Street, um, uh, you like East River Street, uh, kind of meets into a bend, kind of just off of, uh, the 22nd Street Bridge, uh, on the other side of Pick and Save. Uh, it'd be, uh, uh, there, there's, uh, uh, some spots where the sidewalk doesn't wrap all the way around on, on the, on the corner of 23rd, uh, and, uh, East River Street.
Okay. Matt is diligently taking notes and he's got them. Excellent, thank you. Anyone else?
Um, handful of points on the garden thing, which I really don't care about that much. You, you guys kind of recreated the plan commission discussion without the assistance with how that kind of wrapped around. Um, and separate point, walking quorum doesn't have to be a quorum. It's if the quorum kind of through separate groups then eventually comes to a decision. So, I mean, I wasn't going to push this issue, but like last working session, um, I kind of went wide-eyed when you guys said on camera that four of us went there and then you said, and we came to an agreement. If you're kind of toeing a line by like if anybody then through an email or some other one-on-one connection got the fifth member into agreement, now you've got walking quorum. Now you're against Wisconsin open meetings law. Sean can, you know, give you his official opinion, but that's the gist. My one quick thing on the facade extensions, um, fine, good, uh, they seem a little bit long to me that we would stretch all the way into the end of next summer. And having, you know, plywood fronted buildings all the way through the end of next summer doesn't seem ideal to me. I think from, I mean, we're, we're holding grant money and you can put a little bit of pressure on people to be like, okay, you got till June 1st. If they want another extension, I, I guess we kind of extension ourselves to death around here with some of these business owners, but that would be my one thing there. But I'll get on to the main one you all know I'm here for. that would be my one thing there. But I'll get on to the main one you all know I'm here for, which mimics, uh, Mr. Dalkey pretty well. I'm here to clarify the purpose of the Airbnb petition we presented, which has the support currently. Not that we put a lot of effort into getting more signatures, but it has seventy-nine residents so far. The petition was intended as a collective voice on an important issue. We provided addresses to prove residency. Not so council members could go down the list and bother them at their homes arguing about why the petition they signed, quote-unquote, has inaccuracies. I'm talking. We expressed a shared concern from the residents you're supposed to be representing, not to create a situation where signers, to quote another resident, feel intimidated and silenced, quote-unquote. I'm also here to remind the council and the residents watching that the code of conduct you guys created and you all signed. Section five F states that when residents make a request to the council as a body, which we did last week, the response, and here's the, you know, not, it's not evil against the rules, should, so it's not must. But if it goes to the council as a body, which is what we did, it should come from the body, or from the council. Not as individual outreach. As you were told this weekend, when you approached a resident at her home, it can be discussed in an open meeting in front of the cameras, on record, when the public can interact back and forth, not with individual council members. That's not why we gave you the addresses. Lastly, I've heard concerns that there might be efforts from the council member to circulate the pro-Airbnb petition. I guess to submit to yourselves. I heard that secondhand though. I assumed it was a rumor as it just sounded so absurd, but we've heard here that is actually is happening. The residents asked for a town hall meeting to have some back and forth dialogue about Airbnbs. So I think there's three choices for you. Ignore that request from nearly eighty residents, set a public comment date to drag this out even longer, or just engage with your residents in a forum that lets both sides communicate openly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, anything else? Input from the public? Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. Uh, I'm Richard Casey. I live at two four zero three Pine Tree Drive, Two Rivers, Wisconsin here. Um, I have just two things, uh, as far as the garden, uh, deal that you're talking about. Um, I am for that and I think people should be able to do that. Um, if you want to live in a neighborhood that doesn't have that, they have some neighborhoods that are HOAs. Uh, homeowners associations, and they can put in those more strict rules and you won't have that. Um, I bought property here, I'm, I lived in Arizona for thirty years because they don't have HOAs here. Rather than having an HOA, if you've ever lived under that, then you would not have a garden. You wouldn't have anything. Uh, they're very strict. So I just wanted to make that comment. Um, I like the idea of people being able to uh, grow their own food if they would like. So those of you who voted for that, I appreciate that. Uh, another one is I have an idea. I'm a bicyclist. I enjoy biking. Um, with bicycle paths that are on the streets are quite dangerous if you ride a bike. Um, so I would suggest, especially with this town, it's, uh, growing and, uh, you're basically remodeling the town, is, uh, on one side of each street, if you would widen the sidewalk to make it a multi-use, where you can have bicycle and walking, and then on the other side, just walking. And the people that are walking won't have to worry about bicyclists. And then the other side could be for bicycles and it'd be a lot safer. And it'd be a very, um, bicycle-friendly town. And, uh, like when people are down at the beach, they can ride their bike right into town, or wherever they would like to go and do their business and enjoy this beautiful city. So I'm just throwing that out. Um, I thought it would be, uh, nice being a bicyclist if anybody rides a bike. And if they've ever been out riding, uh, it's not fun getting on those streets. Can be quite dangerous. Actually, I took a fall, uh, the other day, broke my arm, uh, August seventeenth. And, uh, so anyway, um, I just thought that would be a good idea. So thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
John Gomez, twenty twenty-three Garfield, right behind the Shota Park. The Shota Park is our jewel. The Shota Park is our Grand Canyon. You don't do nothing to the Grand Canyon. I'm speaking, uh, be, on that behalf, cause our neighbors last year, we agreed to a, more or less a bashi court at the tennis courts. Now we find out it's gonna be ripped up, put in the garden. So, uh, uh, traditions are being taken away. First, the, the baseball diamond is gone. Now they're talking about the tennis courts being gone. What's next? I moved in here because there was traditions. I love these traditions. That's what makes the United States. That's what makes Two Rivers, traditions. And I see little by little being chipped away. Uh, I love this open space and the Shota Park has. Right now, that space is being diminished. Uh, they should take that money, put it into the other parks. We got Vet Park, we got the Bolt Launch Peddlers Park. We got other parks that need money and looking into. The Shota Park is already packed with stuff that doesn't seem necessary. The only thing necessary they need is open space, grass. That's it. Uh, seems like we were like, uh, hooked weak into this, or my neighbors were hooked weak into this because we voted for a more or less bashi court. So now, so my neighbors and us, we have a little distrust in this. So that being said, I would like to keep the Shota Park as is. Because that is our jewel. We need no more scarring of the Shota Park. That there is tradition. If you start chipping away, what's next? Please. Money somewhere else where it is really needed. The Shota Park doesn't need it. All it needs is open space. Fix the washrooms. That's about it. On that, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You. Huge time.
Um, I'm Dan Tegan, um, fifteen twenty-seven Deerbrook Drive, president of the Blue Heron condo association. And tonight you'll be bringing up, um, part of a proposal that we were working out. We've been working with the city for about seven, eight months. And we're down to just a few items, but one item actually. But tonight, um, or today, I was looking at Facebook and there are some people that are putting things on Facebook that aren't true. They're saying that Blue Heron is asking for, um, the city to pay for our sewer repairs and everything. That's not true. I just wanna let you know that. Um, but, um, um, we pay the same taxes as everybody else in the city, and that's why we're asking for leaf pickup um, for the condo association. Um, we pay that taxes and there's no reason why we shouldn't get that service. So.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? Input from the public? See, nothing else, uh, uh, to council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone? Yes, Shannon.
I did do a letter earlier.
Yes.
From, um, I can't remember, the United Fellowship, I believe?
Picture Unitarian Universalist Fellowship.
About clean energy. Did everybody else get that from council? Okay.
Yes, I think I got, I think Greg, you also got a copy of it as well. At least that's what Lisa said.
Okay. Is that regular mail or email?
Yeah, it was regular mail.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, it just says it's a close, is the mailing of a copy of over a hundred signatures that we have collected from Antioch County area. We're asking you as our government leader or candidate to take action on climate change and other environmental issues. We strongly believe, as stated in the closed clean energy petition, that the leadership of state and local government is necessary to help us move our country closer to a hundred percent clean energy. We appreciate all you have done as elected officials to protect the environment, but we also know that much more needs to be done if we are to have a livable world to live in. As members of the Lakeshore Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, we are deeply concerned about how recent climate change environment issues have affected people around the world, especially those who are the most vulnerable. We would appreciate a response sent to the email below that would include your position on these issues. So that's what that is.
I'm guessing probably the best bet there, unless the council wishes it to be on a future agenda, we could certainly, and I'm sorry, I'm not remembering the letter, but uh, Lisa is, thank goodness, um, would be frankly some information on the initiatives that our energy supplier, WPPI Energy, has taken that put them out ahead of the curve and some of the mandates on renewables as part of the energy mix because action, including investing in a twenty-year purchase power contract, which individually folks may agree with or disagree with. Um, uh, from, for solar production that's in place now out at the Point Beach, uh, uh, plant property. So I think that would be the most relevant, uh, information, there's Brian, uh, that we could share with them because quite honestly, the city's electric supplier is ahead of the curve when it comes to addressing emissions. I'll leave it at that, emissions, hydrocarbon emissions.
Uh, anything else? Council communications?
Um, I was wondering, we had, it was supposed to have been changed for the building permits for the metal.
The ordinance was changed, you're right, and the, and the form is reading the same?
Yeah, it still says what it's, what it said and open interpretation.
Note that for the minute, so it's for the record, and I'll, I'll speak to inspections. I, yeah, that shouldn't require any further council action, just reflect the reality of the ordinance amendment that this council passed.
Anyone else? Yes, Adam?
I do have quite a few. Um, I was contacted about the Unimark property. I do see it as on our agenda tonight as well in closed session. Uh, so there won't be much really probably to report on.
Anticipate there'd be some follow-up.
Oh, okay, so maybe.
Meeting in open session.
Okay, so if they are listening, there may be some follow-up in open session, but you'd have to be here to see that, but it would be reported.
I'm sorry, probably at a future meeting.
Oh, sorry, at a future meeting, okay. Um, I was talked to about the front yard garden. I was talked to from a few people, quite a few people, about not adhering to the code of conduct. Uh, from council members that aren't adhering to the code of conduct. Um, I also was in an email about safety issues from DPW. And I think Matt and Greg were both in that email, but I don't think there was a reply.
I know there was at least one reply, if not two, from Matt to the individual.
Okay, cause the one I'm in did not have a reply, so I'm not, I didn't know you got back to him. You did?
Yep.
You didn't copy me?
Honestly.
I didn't, wasn't in that one.
At least one email that you weren't copied on.
Okay, yeah, that must be the one, cause I didn't get a copy on it. So I didn't know you had gotten back to him. Okay, so there were safety concerns with, uh, DPW, and then I was also talked to about, uh, council member going to house about the, uh, about the petition.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any other council communications? Okay, moving on to council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Yes.
Uh, personnel and finance. We did talk to the condo sa- association. I think we've got a lot hashed out as far as the condo association goes. Uh, we do have one item on our agenda and hopefully we can tackle the rest of that, uh, at a next meeting. Uh, we also looked at a glance on the TIDS, which showed a decline in their valuation. A lot of that is due to, uh, getting reassessed and they were on the, uh, lower end of the spectrum, which will have the potential to hurt some of those TID districts as far as money that we have expended to them or monies that we hope to spend on future projects. Uh, hopefully the Department of Revenue comes back with some different statistics, which they still can yet, according to Greg. Uh, that can get finalized yet, but as of right now, they are looking pretty low.
Several of the TIFs were negatively impacted, probably by the, by the revale, because remember, if they're not residential in character, residence shall growth or value, the growth in their residential values is what triggered most of the increase that drove the revale. So for TIFs that are mostly commercial, it's kinda like stepping on a balloon. Some, they, they didn't go up, so. Um, I can tell you that, um, accurate assessments is in dialogue with the Division of Equalization at Department of Revenue, because they're the folks that certify our TIF values to see what happened with some of these. Yeah.
Uh, anything else? Bonnie?
Um, yeah, I'll give another finance report. And on one, Adam was referring to one that met Wednesday and I couldn't make that. And then I, um, he couldn't, well, it doesn't matter. The police brought forth their budget. One, one thing I wanna say about what I've been observing lately is that these department heads seem to be very, um, co- not concerned, but well, concerned about our, just our budget in general and are not, are trying to, um, hold the line on spending as much as they can. I just wanted to give out a compliment to them.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yeah.
They do work hard on it. Thank you, council member.
Yeah, do you have something else?
Well, I had invited both Mark and Adam to give the, anything they'd like to say from the meeting that I missed. So I don't know if Mark had something.
Oh, Adam covered the pertinent from our last meeting. We do have, uh, meetings tomorrow at eight o'clock, tomorrow evening at six o'clock, and Thursday at si- at six o'clock too. Uh, if they're long with the productive and the public would be welcome to those meetings.
We have a meeting tomorrow at six too?
Eight o'clock. Oh, there's a meeting. Personnel Finance, yeah, meets tomorrow at eight AM primarily for fire and EMS budget, which is the last big remaining budget in the general fund. Personnel Finance meets at six o'clock tomorrow night jointly with the City Manager Search Committee, which actually, Wednesday, I'm sorry. Correct, I skipped today. Now, Wednesday at six PM, that's a public meeting here in chambers. That will be for video interviews with two search consultants that are interested in assisting with the city manager search. And then, uh, the committee meets again jointly with the Utilities Committee on Thursday at six PM to go over the various utility budgets. So that, the committee members are really earning their hundred twenty dollars a month. Like you don't normally, uh, this, uh, this week. So, and then there's one more session tentatively next week, Thursday, the um, seventh at six PM, which would be budget wrap-up for the committee. Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Darla.
Um, with Main Street, um, trick-or-treating downtown was very successful. I think they averaged about, they, they estimated about nine hundred and fifty kids. Um, oh, um, Waze Goose, and I, I know Mr. Buckley's gonna talk about Waze Goose over at Hamilton Wood type a little bit more. And then make sure that if you are available to participate, mark your calendars for Friday, December thirteenth for ribbon cutting for the quilt shop of Two Rivers. They have a new location. And then, um, one other thing, Mr. Buckley will bring you up to speed on, speed on, are our Christmas events. Um, Main Street is the one that kinda spearheads the parade. And, uh, then the city has, has new, um, events that they are bringing forth. So I just wanted to bring those up. Also, um, Shop Small November, um, is going to be, which is Shop Small Saturday. That's gonna be this weekend, I believe. Greg?
Okay, I think it's all through November, actually. Cause it used to be Shop Small Saturday on Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, but as I understand it, the, the idea is to promote shopping local all month.
And, um, there is a basket from shops of Schrader's, a TV donated by Shoreline Credit Union, two hundred Cool City Cash donated by, uh, members of Two Rivers Main Street, and two hundred dollars in downtown dining gift certificates. Those are the, uh, um, if you participate in this, these are some things that you could win. I also wanted to say for, um, Environmental Advisory Board, we kinda, we kind of. I also wanted to say for Environmental Advisory Board, we kind of, we kind of reached a hiccup for our videos that we've been putting into a new educational library. Our program crashed, and the company is, so they say, trying to, trying to retrieve everything that was edited. I was in the middle of editing two different interviews. They aren't looking, it's not looking so good now, so there's a possibility that I might have to redo the interviews. So, but that's why we, we haven't posted anything in a while. Other than that, we're going to be working on B-City. We are working on, in conjunction with Mike Mathis and his Parks and Rec, Adler's Park. So, and I know that in the future that Michael had more information, but it's nice because we have established a very good working rapport with Parks and Rec, and a lot of what we're concerned with, Parks and Rec is too. So it's nice to have that, it's nice to have that partnership.
Anyone else?
I think in addition to Main Street, I think there were East Street, Council Neighbors, Christmas Trees, Mike, right, that are available. I think nine have been picked up on, but there's still a number of Christmas trees, 21 or so, available for communities to make donations, individuals, businesses that can get a tree and have it decorated, and it'll be set up in Central Park, right, Mike? So if anyone in the community, a business or a family, would like to decorate a tree, put your name on it, for Central Park, there's approximately 20 some available. And again, you go up to Senior Center or Main Street, I believe, to sign up for the remaining Christmas trees.
Mike from Parks and Rec is heading up to the microphone.
So Springs Tree Farm very generously donated 30 live-cut Christmas trees that we are going to put up in East Central Park. Anybody can decorate those. If you are interested in decorating those, call the Parks and Rec Department, our main desk at the Parks and Rec Department. You do have to book those ahead of time. There's a small suggested, well, it's a required $10 to do that, because we're paying for this stands to hold water for the trees, and that's the first time we've ever done it, so we don't have stands. So there's a small fee to do it, but anybody's welcome to do it, families, businesses. You could market your business, your nonprofit, you will have electricity, and we just ask no politics, basically, on the trees, so.
Yep, and your own lights and decorations, right?
Yes, basically, whatever.
There will be power from various sources. Well, Two Rivers Water and Light, that is.
Water and light.
Solar and nuclear, hold it.
Anything else? Council reports from boards, commissions, committees? Nothing else? Finally, on to City Manager's Report.
Yes, and very happy to introduce invited guests number four, our superintendent Diane and, Diane Johnson and Kyle Korenec with the Two Rivers Public School District. The floor is yours, you can nod my way or beep if you have to, and I will advance the presentation.
Sounds great. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We try to come every once in a while to just provide some information and continue the partnerships that we have with you. It's been a little bit, I had some knee surgeries, so we haven't seen you in a while. This summer, we had an opportunity to redo our vision, mission, and values that we'd like to share, and also, for the first time, the district has created a district three-year strategic plan. So tonight's presentation is just information for you.
That's what I was just motioning Rick for, I think it's. Okay, I'm sorry. And to go full screen, I, you only? You? Oh, there we go. Yep, you. Slide show. Thank you. Thanks for helping this late-stage boomer through the technology.
We can go to the next one, Greg.
All righty.
So this summer, this, we had two evenings together. We invited about 70 different people to come together. That included students, parents, staff, board members, community members, and community partners. Some of those people are actually here tonight. For community partners, we have the Lester Library there. Terry Ale was able to attend. We had city council there, so Scott was there. Former council member Tracy Coach was there. Greg was invited. Greg, you had some medical needs at that time.
Out of commission, so.
Yes, out of commission. Senior Center, Rotary, Optimus, TR Police were a part of that. We had Jake Glager and Andrew Rates. Chief Mirak was there. We had industry members, Kevin Schillcox. We had TR Recreations, Mike Mathis. And then I had to add Mike Canty, because he's sitting in the audience. He was a member of that, and we also had auxiliary members, PJ Stevens. So the goal of those two evenings were to bring all those people together to talk about the focus of education in Two Rivers for the next three years. On the very first night, you'll see a picture up on the screen of people working together. The first night was dedicated to teams developing the framework for the mission, vision, and core values. So teams were, there were teams of 12. They were at tables. Their job was to take a look at vision, looking into the future, what does that mean for the Two Rivers Public School District to be successful? They looked at mission, what is the purpose of a pre-K-12 education in Two Rivers? And they looked at values, how must we behave to ensure that we are a successful school district? All that information was then gathered, and you can see up on the screen, we tried to take all the information from those posters and, and put it into some key phrases that came up with those members several times. And you'll see under vision, the words that came up, under mission, and under values. The one thing I forgot to tell you is, at your places, we did put a booklet for you. You'll see those pieces in there as well. And then we do have extra booklets in the back if anyone is interested. From there, we had a smaller committee come together with the creation of the new vision, mission, and values. Vision, we include inspire, innovate, innovate, impact, we are TR. And then the mission, empower every individual to learn and thrive in a dynamic world by building community, championing diversity, and leading for positive change. We also came up with four value statements. Those value statements are being used at each of our schools to develop what we call the Raider Code. Collaborate, own, the D in lead, and engage. So when you come into the school districts and any of the buildings, you'll, you'll start noticing those values are around each of the schools, and those are pieces that we also want to bring into the community.
Thank you, council, for having us, and Mr. Buckley and Diane for inviting me. I'm Kyle Korenec, Director of Curriculum and Instruction from the school district. Horst Mann had this idea of a free public education being paramount to the bedrock of the democracy of the American society. And I think that in order for that to happen and to exist, the, the folks who support that, you and the people watching, should know that the item, the ideal that they're supporting, is doing the best that it can to educate the students, the children of the community. Just like productive business, school districts thrive when they have strong strategic plans that can be monitored, that can be assessed, so that we can pivot and change quickly, and that we can best inform our educators how to best educate students, to get that feedback, knowing that we're doing a great job, so that the public knows that we're doing a great job. So as we went through this process, we really came up with five specific focus areas. And that pamphlet that you all got notes those five specific focus areas. Focus on learning, cultivating character and connections, leveraging partnerships, empowering staff, and maximizing systems and infrastructure. Now, within those five focus areas, we each have a strategic plan that includes goals, KPIs, key performance indicators, and then a three-year plan. So what we're looking at right here is really that strategic working document that the folks within the school district are working on to ensure that we're making movement every year, year after year. Now, this document itself is very involved. It, it doesn't look that big right now, but, but trust me, when we, when we add in the key performance indicators and all of our essential action steps, this document gets quite large, as it should. There's a lot of key components for a school district that serves 1,500 students. So instead of providing the community with that large working document, we have a forward-facing document, which Diane and Sheila Bialik and some members of our community have put together, and it really just focuses on those KPIs, or K, key performance indicators that we have throughout the district. I'm not going to read through every one of them. You've got the document in front of you if you're so interested, but I'm just going to highlight a few that really pertain to our community. In a focus on learning, the fourth one down talks about increasing the percentage of students in grades 11 and 12 participating in work-based learning. So for us, that includes youth apprenticeships, and that includes co-op opportunities. So members out here have worked with our students in both the co-op and the youth apprenticeship realm. So we want to increase that to 30% or greater of our students working in those areas. Next slide. Cultivating character and connections. We, Diane talked about the code, the Raider Code. And I think about the Raider Code as being this, I'm a football fan, so although I'm a Packer fan through and through, I, I do have to respect the Patriot Way. If you've ever heard Bill Belichick talk about the Patriot Way, there's a way that he expected, that Robert Kraft expected, all of the players and all of the folks in that organization to walk across the threshold of that locker room to behave, the way that they can contribute, that they can be servant leaders, the way that they can help out their community. And our Raider Code is going to do that. Our Raider Code talks about not only how our students behave, but how our staff behave, and how we can lift each other up. One of the key components of the Raider Code, it's the third one down that I really find interesting, it says to increase the percentage of students in grades five through 12 participating in co-curricular activities. Many of us in this room right now, at some point in time, had the opportunity to take advantage of something in choir, in theater, in the band, on the football field. And we know how important that was for us being a part of the school community. So how can we go from where we are now to a better place moving forward? And that's that development of character that's so important in our youth. Next slide. Leveraging partnerships. Now, Diane talked about how many folks were a part of the Strategic Planning Summit and how integral they all were. We want to increase those formal partnerships to enrich educational experiences, support student success, and foster a strong connection between the school district and the community. We currently have 70 community partnerships. We have 70 different partnerships within this community that we work with to help educate our students, and we want to increase that even higher. One of the key ways that we can retain our staff is by ensuring that we help grow them. That first KPI says increase the percentage of staff who feel they receive useful feedback as employees, as educators. So how do we work with our principals? How do we work with our coaches? How do we work with our leaders in our district to be able to provide feedback to our new teachers so that they feel like they're growing, so that they want to stay in our community? You know, those educators, yeah, they're educating our kids, but they're also living here, right? They're also going to our restaurants, they're also taking advantage of things during the, the Cool City Christmas, right? They're also a part of our community, so how can we keep them here so they continue to grow our community and bring their families here? And lastly, maximize systems and infrastructure. Now, this is a really cool component, this is a really cool focus area, because it involves so many entities. You know, a school district, we think about desks, we think about students, we think about teachers, we think about a whiteboard, but it's more than that. It's the technology that helps our students function from day to day. It's the financials that help our district thrive. It's our school resource officers and how they keep our students safe. It's our food services and how they feed our students and keep them fed and so that they can learn well. And it's our fantastic Buildings and Grounds Department that helps to keep our schools immaculate and beautiful. And so you've got some key performance indicators that each one of those individuals had a hand in, so that we know how they're going to move their portion of our entity forward to the future. So we wanted to explain a little bit more, that's more than just Diane and I. There's a quick video, takes about four minutes. The video was actually, I'm very proud of it, it was done by a former student of mine when I was teaching out at Reedsville, a very talented young man by the name of Danny Hagenau. And it really gives an idea of what these two evenings were like when we came together to put together the strategic plan.
Apologize.
So this evening, we're in our second night of our community strategic planning summit. So this is an opportunity for about 75 members of our community to come together and develop a mission, vision, core values for what it is our school district is going to be moving forward.
Give you an opportunity in your package to review those conditions as a team.
This has never been done in our district. So bringing together the voices of everyone and letting people express themselves and letting people understand what our children are going through and the differences from when they were a student to when we have students now, it's incredible.
The advents of AI and things like that, being able to use these technologies appropriately was one of the main concerns that we had.
What I've taken away is I've become very informed. I've learned more in the last day and a half than I've learned my entire life about school districts and the mandates that they are required to follow, their budgets, the gaps in learning that they need to address in our communities, and what is hindering them from doing more.
Hey, let's talk about the impressions on staffing challenges. They're picking things that set them up for the future.
I feel very proud to be a part of this, because it's not only building my education, but it's also helping my brother's education, his friends, my friends, people in this school system. I feel very proud being a part of this, like, huge thing that's happening.
I've had a lot of fun in my perspective out there. I feel like our students have a lot that we can say about it, so I'm glad that they invited our students to come too.
The district's going to utilize the community summit feedback to help to develop a strategic plan, which will include goals and an action plan to move us forward over the next couple of years.
So how do we take a look at this incredible opportunity and use it to our benefit?
Strategic planning is really an opportunity for districts to set a frame that they can use as direction setting, commitment setting, as well as guidance on where they should be allocating resources, what their priorities should be, and how they're going to achieve their goals.
Who's our main character?
The goal of any educator, of any community member, is to take care of our kids. So how do we make sure that our kids are feeling supported, that they're feeling like what they do matters? And how do we connect our kids to the community? Because the kids are going to graduate, and they're going to leave here, and they're going to go out there into our community. How do we make sure that they feel successful in however that looks for them and to our community?
We can't set goals, we can't see our future if we don't get the feedback from the people that we're serving. So tonight, and last night, we've got students, we've got business owners, we've got the fire department, we've got the police department, we've got everybody that has a hand in the community here, representing different aspects, that can have a voice in what it looks like for Two Rivers High School Raider to step onto the graduation stage, to step off that stage and be successful in life there.
I feel like this is a great start to move forward into the future, and I feel honored to be a part of this process, because I feel like I'm part of the solution, giving us a voice and giving us a way to collaborate with them to ensure that success in these students as they enter the top market.
And that's what we had to share with you. Darla?
Yeah, first of all, you guys have been doing a tremendous job. I would not want to be a teacher. I would not have the patience. And so, God bless those who take that on as a, as a vocation. I, I'm, I'm putting my city council hat on right now. And we want, one of the, our goals is to bring new people into the, the community. We want to bring young families in with kids. Here's what kind of bothers me. If I, if I were young at all, but if I were young, married, and had small children, and I wanted to see what our school district was like, and with a rating of three out of ten, that would give me pause. I know that, like in, you know, what you guys are talking about, was it focus on learning, to increase the percentage of students showing academic proficiency and achieving eleventh grade ACT college readiness benchmark. I know that that goes hand in hand. And I know that trying to raise our rating is going to be monumental. But I'm wondering, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I mean, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Because we want that to improve so that we're more attractive to people from outside our area.
Actually, I figured that somebody would ask that question, so we did add one extra slide in there. If Greg could pull up-
Back to the slide presentation?
Yeah.
We've talked before.
Yes.
Change is not immediate. And I think that it would be us hiding behind, you know, maybe that statement would be, would be false for us to do that. Because families do want to see productive schools. They do. My, my children go to the school district. I graduated from the school district. My parents, my grandparents graduated from the school district, so I'm pretty invested. But the slide that we're going to show here, it, it, it took us a while, this is going to be kind of harsh, it took us a while to get down this far. Now, we've been digging for some time, and that's nobody's fault. It's a confluence of things, right? Is it going to happen overnight that we're going to, they're going to switch it around? No, it's not. And I liken it to a city, right? When I was, when I was growing up, my, my mom worked at Hamilton's, right? My grandpa worked at Eggers, Eggers that was right over here, right? My dad worked at WPS, which still, the building's still there, but ain't many people, right? And, and so, what we have seen over the past twenty, thirty years, and it's no surprise, right, that some of those industries have gone away. You know, and so us as a city, we've had a, we've taken some time to kind of rebrand and remarket ourselves. Man, you've all done a great job. I didn't live here. Like, I came back here because of what y'all are doing. Like, that little lighthouse thingy that you got there? Yep, that's cool stuff, right? And so the things that you're doing are fantastic. Now, are they changing it overnight? Nope, it's going to take some time. So, so this is a graph that I show quite a bit, right? So this, this graph starts in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, okay? And you see where we were at in, in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. So what we're going to look at is the numbers that are on those bar graphs, right, sixty-eight point eight. Now, you want that number to be high, right? So you really want the bars to get bigger. They're not getting bigger, right? They're dropping. And it's taken us ten years for us to get down to where we were at. Now Greg, can you, can you just click one more time? Now, it's hard to see this because the change isn't much. But that is the first increase in a decade, right? Fifty-one point three to fifty-one point six. That's not much. But that's the first increase in a decade. Now Darla, I can hear you from here, you're not saying anything. If we go up by a point three every single year, we're all going to be retired or in the ground before we get to where we want to be. And that's, that's not what we suggest. But what we suggest is understanding that for us to get back up to sixty-eight point eight, it's going to take some work. It's going to take a three-year strategic plan. It's going to take an ardent focus. One more, if you click one more time. So what I'd like you to do is, is stick around for November nineteenth. The State of Wisconsin reveals these report cards for public schools on the nineteenth of Wiscon-, uh, nineteenth of November. And, and those will be open for public viewing. Okay? And then what we're going to do on that day is, is we're going to give that to our Board of Education. We're going to put that on our, on our website. And on the twenty-fifth of November, we're going to have a board meeting, and I'm going to have the same slide up there, and I'm going to put another bar on there. Okay? Well, we're pretty, right? We know what that's going to look like. But I just want you to stick around for then to see what that looks like, okay? Right? But that's a great question. Keep asking it.
Good luck to you guys. I know I'm looking at this graph and COVID.
All right.
Come on, that, you guys were, you guys were really kicked in the teeth with that, but you came through it with flying colors. So thank you very much for that. So I can understand where some of the drops would be attributable to. But hey, if, if it's starting to increase, it's starting to increase.
We also feel like, you know, through COVID, some of the challenges were, and continue to be just kids getting to school. So behind the scenes, we're doing a lot of work on attendance at each of the buildings, making sure that parents are aware of what the attendance rules are, and trying to make sure we have kids at school because we're not going to change that unless our children are present. So. Could you just go up?
I'm going to say forward the revised slide to after that board meeting on the twenty-fifth. We'll share it.
Just go up, just want to invite the community and the board to, we have some Veterans Day celebrations. I listed them out there, where they're at. We'll be able to have them at each of the schools. If you're able to make the LB Clark one, you'd get to see part of LB Clark. We're also going to have a ribbon cutting that I will send you an invitation to as well for the new, like new. Feel free to join.
Thank you so much. Oh, ears? Okay. I, I know I've said this before. I'll make it fast. I'll try to make it fast. But a big deal. Personnel and Finance Committee has been meeting with me and the department heads for about three meetings now, I think, on the twenty-twenty-five budget. The proposed budget comes to the committee as staff, the city manager's proposed budget. It leaves the committee with recommendations for any changes or for overall adoption, hopefully, from the committee, and then comes before the council for further review, brief review usually, because you're all invited to the committee meetings, and for action. The budget, of course, provides resources for operation of all of our city departments and investment in capital, equipment, facilities, and infrastructure, currently under review by the Personnel Committee. You heard, they've got three meetings this week. And one of those is joint with the Utilities Committee because the utilities are a big part of our budget and a big part of the important services provided by the city. Just a reminder, the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five budget is scheduled for Monday, November twenty-fifth, which is normally our work session meeting at six PM. The budget will be up for a vote by council, by council and on December two. And with a little luck and a tailwind, tax bills go out the end of that week. With all funds taken into account, the twenty-twenty-five budget is a plan for investment of about forty-two million dollars of the public's money. We have a bunch of funds, as our new finance director was, has observed, you know, a lot of various activities within the umbrella of city government. We have three major tax-supported funds, general, debt service, and library. We have various capital projects funds that bring together the resources for those investments and equipment, facilities, and infrastructure, generally funded with debt and grant funding. We have a plethora of special revenue funds, our TIF districts, funds that use revenue from dedicated sources like, well, TIFs, but also room tax, tourism, various special charges. We have some special funds that are tied to specific grant funds, like State of Wisconsin Emergency Medical Services or EMS grants for the fire department. We have our various utility funds. And as a full-service city, you well know that the city provides the electric service, water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste, and has a little teeny utility, budget-wise, the telecom utility, that provides connections between our different city facilities, schools, and does lease some dark fiber for use by telecom companies within the city. The proposed twenty-twenty-five budget proposes no increase in total property taxes to be collected by the city. I think that's especially important in this revalue. People still might be dubious, but however your tax bill changes, the city's intent isn't to realize a windfall. It's keep doing business. So, the goal this year, very much so, is to keep that outside of the TIF districts, to keep that levy which flows for general fund operations, debt service, and support of the library, even with twenty-twenty-four. Ain't no extra money coming in to fund this year's budget. Next year, may have to think about that. The budget proposes also no changes in rates and charges in support of the city's various utilities. That's not out of any kind of aversion to doing the right thing. It is because this council in recent years has supported the necessary rate adjustments. Nobody likes doing them, but to be good stewards of the utilities that, that we all have oversight of for the people in the community. Real briefly, general fund spending's just over twelve and a half million dollars as proposed. It's up just under three and a half percent from that, from last year. And that is within the parameters of Wisconsin's expenditure restraint program, which would allow Two Rivers to raise its general fund spending by three point seven percent. Anything above that, you would endanger, well, you would, we wouldn't get our expenditure restraint money from the state next year, which is about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. General fund funds a lot of our big service budgets, most notably public safety, police, fire, and EMS. Also, you'll find public works, parks, recs, cemeteries, and administration within the general fund. This budget is about ninety percent personnel costs, and this year's budget does provide for no changes in staffing, maintaining status quo, a three percent wage increase for non-union employees, wage increases per collective bargaining agreements for police. This is the third year of a three-year contract and provides for a three percent wage lift. And fire, also in the third year of a three-year agreement, and that one is a two-two split, January one, July one. There've been some significant investments through those contracts which have been integral, I would say, to attracting and retaining good people in our emergency services. The budget does provide for a thirteen percent increase in health insurance premiums. Health insurance continues to be a huge challenge, both for coverage for our active employees and those folks that continue to get retiree coverage, which has been grandfathered out, but whose impact is still significant budget-wide, about seven hundred thousand dollars. So, no, no surprise, health insurance is a challenge. The general fund, again, that twelve and a half million dollars, fully fifty-six percent is public safety. You know, security and safety is job one, and those two functions make up over half of the budget. You've got pretty similar slices of the pie for public works, what we call culture, rec, and education, and general government at fourteen percent, twelve percent, eleven percent, respectively. With our chart of accounts, Health and Human Services is senior center and cemetery. I didn't make that up. And they, they comp, they constitute three percent of the budget. Other financing uses is mostly transferred to other funds, most of that for the retiree health insurance. On the revenue side, revenues are up three point five, three percent in a balanced budget. No surplus, no budgeted contingency, which is a worry, but our department heads have shown the ability to be good managers of their budgets. State funding assistance, whoops, I'm sorry, is the single biggest category, five point seven million dollars out of that twelve and a half million dollar budget. As I used to joke, the good news is we get a lot of money from the state. The bad news is we get a lot of our money from the state. And that's kind of scary sometimes at, at budget time in the middle of the night when they're making sausage in Madison, and we're just attending to business locally. I will say that both last year's budget and in this year's budget, we see the very real benefits of our legislature and governor working together, make that a headline, working together, to rework the shared revenues formula, because we'd only seen reductions or freezes for twenty-plus years. Last year, the legislature and governor came to agreement on pegging aid to local governments at equaling twenty percent of sales tax revenue. In other words, one cent out of that five cent sales tax. And generally, sales tax revenues go up with an expanding economy. Sadly for most of us, they go up with inflation too. And last year, we saw an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in our shared revenues. And as we discussed last year, frankly, that kept the city from hitting the wall as far as our ability to provide services. This year, we're seeing state shared revenues up almost three percent from last year, a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. General transportation aids is a little more complicated. The state, in the biennial budget, raised those transportation aids for our local streets and the connecting state highways within the city's jurisdiction. They increased that pot of money by two percent in each year of the budget. But what we get at the local level is both a function of that overall funding level and a formula that looks at, looks back several years at what the city's spending has been on street improvements, police patrol, a bunch of factors go into that formula. Bottom line, it's not huge, but almost another twenty-eight thousand dollars or four point six percent over last year. Our expenditure restraint payment, oh, I said, stated that a little high earlier, of a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars is unchanged from last year. That's a reward the state gives the community for keeping its year-over-year budgeted general fund spending at or below a CPI-based figure. They throw in CPI and a little bit of growth based on new construction in the community. Property taxes in support of this budget, kind of interesting, they're only about one fifth of the total general fund budget revenues, just over two and a quarter million dollars. That's up marginally, but it's offset by a reduction in our debt service budget, again, with the goal being zero net increases. Other major revenue categories include charges for services. The biggest chunk there would be ambulance fees, which are close to nine hundred thousand dollars, actually collected. Mark could quickly add probably about one point seven or eight million dollars billed, but we generally collect in the low fifties net, given the large number of Medicare and Medicaid folk, folks with those coverages. Special assessments, which has increased in recent years as we've gotten more active in our street projects, and some inter-fund transfers, and yes, interest earnings because where higher interest has a downside, it also means idle cash or investments are earning more. Oops. Okay, there we go. So again, those revenues, fully forty-five percent intergovernmental, local property taxes at a quarter, special, or charges at thirteen percent, and the rest as shown there. The debt service fund, pretty much steady as she goes. We're going to be spending this year a total of two and a half million on, excuse me, tax levy will be two and a half million for debt service. There's two and a quarter million in existing debt principal being paid down. And I had interest in there somewhere, about a quarter million dollars in interest. Now, that exceeds slightly the amount of the levy, but there, there's some transfers in from other funds as well. I'm sorry, five hundred seventy thousand in interest payments, so we're about three point one million total. Two and a quarter of that, or two and a half of that comes from property taxes, the balance of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars are transfers in from other funds, notably some of the TIFs, to cover general obligation debt attributable to the TIFs. The library, the city council adopt the library budget. That's the statutory responsibility and authority of the library board. However, the amount of property tax support for library operations is governed by this body. Library board and director have recommended a two percent increase in city tax levy to fund the library. That would increase by about sixteen thousand dollars, the tax support. I'm at this point not recommending that. I love the library, fully supported, as did this council, about a fifty thousand dollar lift in tax support last year. Again, maybe I'm being a little too rigid. I figured I'd beat you guys to it. But I really think in this revalue, it's important to show the community that we're holding the line. So that, that's my recommendation. I very much respect where the library board is coming from. There is a nice increase in county funding, which is based on circulation to areas outside the city, and, and we applaud our county for the funding support they provide there. The library operating budget, as approved by the library board, is just barely over a million dollars, up about five point six percent over last year. And our, our library is amazing. So those are the three major, the three tax-supported funds. Capital projects, what are we looking at next year for some specifics? A three-block area with one block each of Harbor Sixteenth and Emmett Streets on the east side. That's to replace an undersized water main in that area that's been identified for quite a few years as a system deficiency. Those streets also need some work. That'll be funded from tax-supported borrowing. Special assessments will help repay that borrowing, and some utility fund borrowing. All over the city, we will be continuing to pursue lead water service lateral replacements. Most of that activity funded through the water fund, but worth noting. And right now, there's a lot going on in the- And right now, there's a lot going on in the north central area of the city, thirty-second, thirty-third, thirty-four streets between Tannery and Adams. Lot of activity there, getting the lead out with some help from state funding. This budget does provide for completion of the phase-three infrastructure at Sandy Bay Highlands subdivision. And that, as you know, will open up twenty-six new single-family home sites to development with the intent that most of that debt would be repaid from lot sale revenue. Uh, there's about half a million dollars in the proposed capital budget for overdue building repairs and some security improvements at the Public Works Garage. There's also funding proposed for um, park improvements. That was addressed briefly earlier under public comment. Uh, the big, biggest one being a grant-assisted project entirely consistent with the Neshota Park Master Plan over at Neshota Park. Uh, the overall budget proposes two point seven million dollars in new ten-year GO debt uh, in support of those projects. About two point one million of that would be repaid through future property taxes. We've often cited that over ninety percent of the city's outstanding debt is under ten-year. We generally, I think it's fairly conservative, we issue our debt in ten-year increments. Well, well, less than the useful life of most of the things it's paying for. I'm not going to de- detail the special revenue funds. There's a lot of detail there, but that's our twelve active TIF districts. The room tax and tourism funds. We have economic development loan fund, the housing loan fund that's administered by MSA services for the city, the affordable housing fund, which is a bit of TIF money set aside for housing initiatives, urban forestry and tree planting in the parks and rec world, uh, the separate funds for park concessions meant to be self-sustaining from revenues, uh, primarily at the beach. Special events fund, which is from fireworks to summer concerts, about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of activity, all funded by donations and net revenues from concessions. The senior center fund uh, is part of the senior center budget. A portion is tax-funded. Another portion is funded by revenue generating activities at senior center, including trips. Um, probably to be closed out at the end of twenty twenty-five. We have a special fund uh, where the city is spending its American Rescue Plan Act dollars, the one point three million or so in ARPA dollars. We were awarded, thank you Manitowoc County for matching us on outlays for lead lateral uh, replacement. Sure want to see that cooperative agreement soon, because I'm getting more nervous the longer that takes. And uh, but God bless them. And uh, then the EMS grant fund that I mentioned earlier, which is in the fire area. And there's a handful of other special revenue funds. Utilities, bottom line, uh, well, no rate increase proposed in any of the utilities. Electrics, about nine and a half million. Seventy-two percent of that is the cost of wholesale purchase power purchased from WPPI Energy and provided to customers. When you net that out, this is about a two point six million dollar budget. And the, the budget for getting the power to your homes, getting the lights back on when storms and outages come through. Uh, our cost net of purchased power is up four point four percent over last year. We have a very highly skilled line crew. Uh, there is uh, borrowing from WPPI Energy proposed in the budget for a new bucket truck that the council previously authorized ordering. I think that's about a three hundred sixty thousand dollar purchase. The water utility is another major utility. This one is on the order of uh, whoops, I left out a comma there, but if you go down to the bottom, it's about a three million dollar budget. Operating budget as proposed is two and a quarter percent over last year. Again, a whole lot of uh, capital infrastructure there from uh, a mile-long intake that brings us Lake Michigan water into the treatment plant. Our very state-of-the-art, whoops, filtration and treatment facilities. Pushing that water out through fifty-plus miles of mains, two elevated storage tanks and ground reservoir. No secret to you, big emphasis in this budget and for the next ten years as we work to meet that EPA mandate that recently became official, getting the lead out, all of the lead laterals, still about sixteen hundred after we complete the current contracts out in the system. So, no rate increase. Our last increase was in twenty twenty-three. Next time a rate increase is needed, it will have to be uh, a long-form increase to the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, because bu- both electric and water rates are regulated by the PFC. Uh, I'm speaking briefly about the sanitary sewer utility, but we don't just take water out of the lake. We put it back in. We live on the lake. We draw our sustenance from the lake. And yeah, it costs just about the same amount of money for the utility to operate the utility that cleans the water up before discharging it back to the lake. About three million, no, no rate increase proposed. As we'll discuss at utilities and finance on Thursday, twenty twenty-six. Probably going to need to look at another single-digit percent increase. Stormwater utility's been around for about fifteen years. That's that charge of six dollars ninety cents on your residential bill. If, if you've got a commercial, industrial or institutional property, it's based in equivalent residential units or ERUs that are multiples of that standard charge. Uh, we've never changed the fee charged by that utility since its creation. Nothing is proposed for twenty twenty-five. And, but it does, the whole point of this was it gives us a dedicated source of funding for capital improvements to the stormwater collection system and treatment system. And uh, this budget, as an operating budget, is down quite a bit this year, about twenty-five, twenty-seven percent. Most of that is because uh, we had a bit of a bump in, in the current year budget to fund a, about a hundred thousand dollar study. About half local funding, about half grant funding to update our stormwater modeling. And utilities committee is pretty familiar with that. That, that's still a work in process. Solid waste utility, the ever-popular garbage stickers that you remember at midnight, the night before, that you don't have any? Make a run to QuickTrip or get them at City Hall. I've only bought garbage stickers at City Hall once or twice in twenty-nine years. QuickTrip, yes. Uh, oh, the grocery store. Anyway, I digress. Uh, this funds curbside collection of garbage and recyclables by Manitowoc disposal or contractor. Plus the landfill fees for all the garbage that goes there. Also funds fall leaf collection ongoing right now. Up until last year, this fund also provided resources for street sweeping with this year's budget that got moved over to the stormwater fund, which is where most cities these days budget their street sweeping activities. Uh, revenue sources there, two primarily, two primarily, primary locally-controlled revenue streams, the monthly environmental fee on utility bills, which goes to this fund plus the landfill fund that deals with costs of the landfills that were formerly operated by the city. Still the city's responsibility. Little bit of it goes to tree planting and maintenance or urban forestry. The biggest single source of those ever-popular garbage stickers, which did go up from two fifty to three dollars earlier this year. And then there's about eighty thousand dollars in state recycling grants that help with our recycling efforts. This budget's just shy of nine hundred thousand dollars, up seven point six four percent over last year. That's mostly due to uh, negotiated and agreed upon by council, uh, increase in the contract for Manitowoc disposal. So, no fee increase necessary in twenty twenty-five. I'm not going to talk much about the telecommunications utility. It's under twenty-five thousand dollars. No fees to the general public for that one. And just a reminder again, that draft budget will be posted by next Sunday online at tworivers.org. It'll also be available in paper copies at the finance department in Lister Library. Public hearing, three weeks from, at six PM here in chambers. That's my story on the budget and I'm sticking to it. Again, people are welcome to come to the work sessions, uh, what have you. So, that is that. And you're saying, oh, Lord, he's got a city manager's report. I do. Is this in? Yeah, yeah, I'm, believe me, let's see. I'll make this one. Couple of great views of the city there from the water, whether it's the lake or the East Wind River. We are recruiting again, uh, open until filled for the community development director, city planner position. And as also noted here, uh, the city manager search committee, which is the three members of finance, council members Shimmel, Lunes, Wahusky and Bittner, plus council president Steck Messer. Make up that committee. They're meeting six o'clock here on Wednesday for video interviews with MGT and public administration associates, two finalist firms, uh, who propose to assist with city manager search and selection efforts. And I expect that committee will bring a recommendation to the full council as far as engaging a firm. Expect to see that in November. I would note that the twenty twenty-five city budget does include funds for the search and other expenses that may be associated with uh, bringing a new city manager in, whether it's relocation assistance, some provision for overlap with the current incumbent who will go unnamed and the new person. Uh, but that is provided for in the proposed budget. Congratulations are in order because uh, as uh, the chamber of Manitowoc County was considering various nominees, all with a lot of merit for um, the future fifteen. Our own senior center supervisor, Heather Islandfelt, and Parks and Rec Director, Mike Mathis. Uh, I believe there were also one or two people from the Two Rivers School District. Might it include one of the people present here tonight? Does not, okay. But some other really great people from the Two Rivers School District. Uh, so congratulations, Heather and Mike. Good stuff. Uh, you might have heard, there's an election coming up and uh, can tell you that the, as of the close of business today, out of two thousand nine hundred ninety-eight absentee ballots issued, two thousand nine hundred twenty-one have been returned. So there's some people out there that still have their absentee ballots. Those can be dropped off through eight o'clock, until eight o'clock tomorrow night when the polls closed. And um, I don't have the calcs on that, but I did it for this, as of, as of last Friday at five o'clock. At that time, two thousand eight hundred eighty-nine ballots had been turned in, and that was fully forty-five percent of registered voters in the city of Two Rivers had already voted absentee. And I don't have a final number here, but we picked up, Lisa, about three hundred new voter registrations uh, during the period. And you can still register at the polls tomorrow, but we've picked up about three hundred new registered voters through this period. Of course, you can uh, if you have one of those absentee ballots that's still out, you can drop it off tomorrow uh, at City Hall Dropbox down at the customer service counter. And uh, the polling places are open, help me, Lisa, from seven AM to eight PM tomorrow at Saint Peter the Fisherman Parish and at Abundant Life Church. Kudos again. Thank you to those local uh, organizations, religious organizations for providing uh, safe, fully accessible uh, polling places. That's a nice community service. Our city engineer writes as much as I talk, but this is an update on the Roosevelt Avenue reconstruction. Largely completed. That was our big project this year. Uh, it did narrow up uh, some of the intersections down there. We have parking that transitions from being one side on, on one side of the street to the other. That's intended to have a traffic calming effect. Uh, can't wait to, we, we did uh, on this project, opt to sod the terraces, which looks a whole lot better than trying to plant grass seed and gravel, which seems to be what some of these contractors do. And uh, looking forward to getting some trees planted there, especially if Frontier would get their dang cables located, relocated to the other side of the street, which they told us they were going to do when the project started. But there are limited, the city has limited authority relative to those private utilities. But looking good and uh, billings for about five hundred fifty thousand dollars in special assessments, which folks have the option of doing a ten-year installment on, went out last week. That's a big project. Uh, the, the middle of the north side, thirty-second up to thirty-four streets between Tannery and Adams is getting torn up as we again, continue those efforts to get the lead out. Um, the preliminary feedback on our notice of intent to apply for um, lead abatement, uh, funding assistance from the state. Next year, for probably a twenty twenty-five, twenty-six contract, looks very favorable based on the preliminary scoring of our application. So uh, we'll, we'll unveil that shortly, but it looks like we'll do a lot better on principal forgiveness than we did this go around. And again, we expect the borrowing for the laterals at least to be at zero point two five percent as the state deploys some of the federal money there. Sandy Bay Highlands Phase Three, uh, advanced construction came in, started grubbing out. And uh, the underground utility work uh, began last week. So they're doing some digging over there. Uh, on the local development front, just I, I touched on a few last time. Uh, I'm going to start in the upper right-hand corner. We are pleased to know that closing happened on the former Luigi's. The two new owners shown there from a Facebook post that we're happy to share. And by sometime in the spring, they hope to have a new wood fire pizza kitchen open over at the Twenty-Second Street location that was Luigi's. Uh, Sovi's Automotive is well underway with their roughly one million dollar expansion project. Uh, city glad to be assisting there with a TID number twelve pay-as-you-go grant. And keep your fingers crossed on this one. We've seen the proposal before. But this time, things are looking pretty positive for new market-rate apartment development on the former Hanson the Flores property, three thousand Forest Avenue. Uh, new owner did close on the purchase of that property in late October. And plans were delivered this week for next week's plan commission meeting. The staff hasn't had time to do a complete review on those, but what would be proposed there is an amendment of the previously approved plan unit development for that site. And in round numbers, that's about an eight million dollar development, we are told. And the developer has requested some TIF funding assistance. That'll be at least touched on in the closed session uh, tonight. So, some good things happening. Um, Mike, uh, we've got a few shots from the um, forestry page on the city's website. Could you speak briefly to the new features we have out there?
All right. So when you go to the city uh, website and you go to Parks and Rec at the top, there's another tab under there, uh, labeled forestry. Uh, we completely updated that webpage with lots of uh, frequently asked questions, kind of our protocols for how we manage street trees, made sure uh, the uh, forestry management plan that we had done last year is there. It's always been there, but it's a little bit more prominent now. And the other thing that uh, was funded as a part of this year's Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry um, project and grant was a uh, tree inventory database. So, on that website, you can go through an additional link uh, to this GIS database. And so, you can see a dot for every single tree that was logged in the city on terraces or in public parks or in city property. Uh, and you can click on that tree. You could go find your home address and find the terrace, uh, terrace tree that's in front of your house. See how that tree was scored, at least in fall of twenty twenty-three, what species it is. Uh, lots of information about that tree, what's the desired maintenance needs to be done on that tree. Other good facts about uh, ash trees, uh, tree counts by condition. Uh, the, what type of work needs to be done on trees. So, a big point in this is when we did the inventory in uh, summer, fall of twenty twenty-three, we had over four hundred trees in our terraces that were dead or dying and needed to be removed. Uh, and that's dressed, very much so helped us prioritize what trees we're going to work on and which ones we're going to take out. And how do we use our budget and prioritize our resources to take out the most risky trees? So, there's lots of information here, um, fun data and a GIS map that's uh, kind of cool to play with. And of course, just good basic information. If you have any questions about, you know, uh, there's a tree overhanging the road or it's going into private property and this and that, all the random questions you could possibly ask. Hopefully, we've got good explanations on that new, on that forestry website now.
A lot of investment, a lot of assistance from the state, getting some of our basic tools for urban forestry up to date. And it's at your fingertips on the website. Thank you, Mike. Good stuff. Some great partnerships going on too with groups, including uh, tree planting with funding from the Lakeshore National Natural Resources Partnership that took place just last week at Paddler's Park. So, and there is a plan there. Hey, um, from a city staff standpoint, we will be preparing some recommended amendments to the ordinance on licensing of short-term rentals. For consideration, uh, we had a discussion today with staff and the city attorneys. This may be January, if not November. We've got a lot in the pipeline right now. I did not take away from that meeting any, the last meeting last Monday, any policy direction on changes. There are clearly some, I'd say, fine-tuning changes that are needed. So there's, there's good clarity in the city's existing licensing ordinance. Like, we all knew when, when you passed it, what, what the charge per number of contacts is. We didn't define contact in the ordinance though, so resulted in a little head scratching even in people that were in on writing it. Um, we talked about some issues for better conformity with the zoning code. So we're going to go ahead with those, but I, there may be opportunity at future council meeting for a more, for some more overt direction as to vacation rentals, but just wanted to let you know staff is doing some things on that. Uh, upcoming events, Two Rivers Utilities reminds you of their annual food drive, November fourth to the fifteenth. If you bring three non-perishable food items, you can get a string of LED Christmas lights, an LED floodlight or light bulb. And um, the names will be entered into a drawing for a prize as well. Bottom line, this is all about supporting our community and the donations ultimately benefit Two Rivers Ecumenical Pantry. So, keep trip uh, in mind, not just at this upcoming holiday season, but year-round as the needs are there in our midst here in the community. Uh, Darla mentioned earlier, others have mentioned the Waze Goose printers. Darla mentioned earlier, others have mentioned the Waze Goose Printers Workshop at Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum. We'll be having lots of guests in the community as we do each year at this time, usually as the gales of November start blowing in off Lake Michigan. And this conference truly draws a national and international audience here to this amazing resource that tells not just the story of letterpress printing and, and Hamilton, but really so much tells the story of Two Rivers and this industry that's remains sadly no longer an employer, but an integral part of our identity. So thanks to the folks over at Wood Type. Be sure to greet all the folks that'll be in town for Waze Goose. The Two Rivers Senior Center again this year is offering the Thanksgiving Community Meal on Thanksgiving, November 28 at noon. They're taking registrations by contacting the Senior Center up to November 7. That's always a great get together whether, whether as an alternative to spending the holiday alone, or if you want to pick up your family and bring them on down, a great feeling of community there and a reminder we have a lot to be thankful for. Somebody mentioned earlier, the Cool City Christmas. That was an amazing first time event last year to basically celebrate the holiday season right in the heart of our new Central Park West. I'm going to give the lady that's retiring and sitting up at the dais tonight, a lot of credit for being the quarterback on that amazing event last year. It continues this year. And as was noted earlier, activity will extend actually for the, pretty much the whole holiday season to the east side of Central Park with the Christmas tree decorating contest. Thank you to Springs Trees and Wreaths for that support. And you know, the rest of the drill there. Shop Hometown all month long. Yeah, you can sit at your computer and do online shopping, but see if Amazon supports your kids' Little League team or trap or other things in the community. Maybe they do. And if they do, I'm sorry I missed that. But our local, our local businesses are here 365 days out of the year and warrant our support. Remind you, and I think the invite's already gone out to council about participating in the Hometown Christmas Parade of Lights, as always on Saturday night of Thanksgiving weekend, 5:30 PM staging north of Washington Street and always a wonderful magical night in downtown. And you can throw candy. We just had to warn Bonnie who's got quite an arm on her about not throwing it too hard at the kids because she knocked one off the curb last year. Just kidding. The Lester Public Library has some wonderful events coming up in November. Would remind you that Storytime is every Tuesday at 10:15 AM. A couple of things related to our Lake Michigan Heritage Program on the Rec of the Edmund Fitzgerald with UW Emeritus Professor Steve Ackerman. That is on Veterans Day, November 11, next Monday, 6:00 PM. You'll miss Plan Commission, but I bet you get a bigger audience at the library for the Rec of the Edmund Fitzgerald. And then John Y. Rostick, our friend who is the chair of the, or the president of Friends of Raleigh Point on the Explore Two Rivers Board and on the Citizen Advisory Council for the Shipwreck Coast National Marine Sanctuary. We'll talk about research being done in the sanctuary and how that relates to this area off Raleigh Point and Two Rivers, which is, has some of the most storied shipwrecks of the Great Lakes that have occurred right off our shores. So some great programming coming up again at Lester Library. I don't have anything else and you'll be glad that as we look back from the pier, I've come to the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Legislative, Greg?
Nothing on legislative. They're all running for office and neither doing good nor harm in their legislative capacities. No, nothing else is happening right now. Thank you. But we'll keep an eye on that.
Thank you for that. Onto number 10, consent agenda. Under A, we have minutes of meetings. We have the Public Works Committee from October 2nd, 2024. We also have the Joint Meeting Room Tax Commission and Explore Two Rivers Board of Directors from October 17th, 2024, and Architectural Control Committee from October 29th, 2024. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under B, we have summary of verified bills for the month of October 2024 for $2,113,729.93. The recommended action for the consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Thank you, Bonnie. Looking for second. Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? Seeing none. This will be an all in favor. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for that. Onto 11, City Council formal items. There are three of those. Under A, we have authorization to extend certain project deadlines for previously authorized downtown area facade grants. The first one is the Hook Lanes and Games, 1916 Washington Street. Extend completion deadline to June 30th, 2025, and financial reporting deadline to July 31st, 2025. The second one we have for the Cuba Building on 1606 Washington Street and extend completion deadline to June 30th, 2025, and financial report deadline to July 31st, 2025. And under the number three, we have a Pop Start Restaurant LLC, 1033 22nd Street. Extend deadline for closing on project property to October above 2024.
Greg, please. All three of these grants were approved previously by Action. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Greg, I'm assuming gets that. That's when they closed their previous agreement was.
That one, that one is pretty much a technicality, but I thought it best to bring it back to the council lest somebody say, oh, they blew past a deadline. They closed on the property, but they're supposed to do it by September 30. Might not have brought it. It was the only one, but anyway. At the council's June 17 meeting, the grants, the additional grant for Hook Lanes and Games was approved and a new grant for Cubas for the building that, the building at 1606 Washington Street were approved. The council approved those from budgeted funds in the 2024 budget. I noted that the letter of agreement that I worked up with each of them in consultation with Main Street, which is co-funding these grants, did include deadlines. Those weren't directed by council, but I thought that, but they were in there in what was signed then by myself and the business owners. Speaking with both of them last week, the Hook Lanes and Games assured me that he has the materials on order for completion of his facade. He's invested quite a bit in overhead doors and windows. We know the front is far from finished. Tim expects to be able to get it sited yet this year, even though it's getting kind of cold. But ultimately, we're pretty, unless we have some unusual weather, we're getting past outdoor painting season. So to make sure the whole thing is wrapped up, we talked about the end of May. Well, in Two Rivers, you're not always guaranteed great painting weather in May. So that doesn't, doesn't mean it won't be finished before June 30, but the recommendation is to move that up to June 30, which is not the end of summer, but fairly early in the summer. And then the filing deadline for the paperwork is simply a month after completion, as it was in the orig- The Cubas have been unable to get their contractor lined up after initially consulting with that contractor for quotes. I know they've been in touch with the Main Street Office about this on an ongoing basis. So they feel they need an extension. I would say they, you know, they did an outstanding job. I think it took longer than they thought, but the building that Wicker Real Estate occupies across the street was also a Joanne Cuba project and probably one of the most outstanding renovations we've had of a facade on the Main Street. Pop Start Pizza, this is just, I guess I would say correcting a little hiccup in their agreed upon grant agreement, which did go through city council in full detail. And that is simply that while prospectively nothing would change, we had a requirement in there that they closed by, on the purchase of the property by September 30. That indeed took place on October 11. So, but ask that the council consider, and I believe it could be done in one motion if you wish, authorizing the extensions as presented.
Thank you, Greg. Looking for that motion. Thank you, Adam. Second by Tim. Any council discussion?
Yes. Greg, Hooks and Lanes. That really is an I. Sorry. A lot of people mentioned that. And you said the siding looks like it's, could be available soon. I don't know if the siding has to be painted.
I believe it's like Louisiana Pacific smart siding. I recall that only because of the design review meeting with Main Street. So it is primed at least.
It would make a major-
That's, that was what Mr. Klein stated as his intent. He said he, you know, he has the, the ability to, to float getting those materials because both of these grants are only paid out on a reimbursement basis, but did not feel he could do the final painting and then any trim painting until spring.
Or could we start adjusting by earlier dates so we?
Good. If, if you wish to specify that, the council would want to see siding in place by year end or something. I'm not saying I won't be back here with another amendment, but I'd, I'd leave that to your discretion. I don't disagree with you at all.
Guy's got a plan and there's been, you know, he, he thinks he's going to be able to get some materials and guess what? You know, they're not available. So he's, and he has to fit the remodeling of that building around his work. So, I mean, we definitely talked to him about it through Main Street or through the city. But he's trying. I mean, he's, he's already gotten quite a bit done.
He has done a lot of work out there and I'm not willing to amend the motion. I think they should all get the time that they need here. Obviously we'd like them all to be done, but that, that's life. Sometimes things come up.
Plus we have to look at it, what is it going to, how's it going to benefit the city in the long run? How much money and, and blood? These are these people. We're going to benefit from it. And if it's looking ratty right now, it won't be ratty for long.
And Darla's right. They could just sit there like this. You know, there, there's nothing that says they have to even go through with it. I mean, we're just offering them incentive to do it. They don't really have to fix up their fronts to, to the way that it shows even on that plan. That's, that's only inclusive of city money.
Right. One, one in its current state kind of midway through might not meet some code requirements for having protected wood or something, but I, there's, there's, I'm not aware of any code violation, for example, with the Cuba Building. It's just by their own admission in need of an update. And on each of these, there's a, there's a match requirement as well for the property owner.
If I recall, the Hook and Lanes Agreement required that outside contractors were to be used. His work would not be refunded.
That's my recollection.
I mean, hurrying it along, doing his own work is not, I mean, it's going to do him some good, but it's not going to do him any favors as far as the grant goes.
Greg's looking for- I was just double checking that, but that, that's ringing true.
There's something in there for materials too, is there not? I don't think it's just
Well, Greg looks. Anything else?
That was the understanding on the original grant application. I am not seeing a reference
Anything else?
By the way, just by color commentary, you may recall in various budgets, this 2024 budget had $100,000 available for business grants. I believe we've committed 90 of that at this point. I have an outstanding auto body shop over on Jackson. There was a $10,000 grant that was funded for the Wellness Center. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the exact name in the former bank on Lincoln. So 30, 25 for the hook, 10 for this other one. I'm sorry. Yeah. So, and next year's budget right now has, I believe, $40,000 in new money that could be allotted to projects. I think Main Street's looking to at least add 10. We haven't seen their budget yet. So anyway, hopefully this continues. Some good things. We'd all like to see it happen faster. I expect these business owners would too if they could.
Okay. So we'll see. There's no other discussion. This will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Ille Leclerc.
Aye.
Douglas Brand.
Aye.
Tim Patriot.
Aye.
Bonnie Schimelunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mohusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you. Onto B, notification receipt of state approved plat for Sandy Bay Highlands Subdivision Phase Three.
Yeah. We've, you've been waiting a while for it. You have a copy of the plat that went to the state in your packets. City Engineer, actually McMahon Associates who submitted the plat for the city, got the signed plat back from the Department of Administration last week. Long story short, the remaining steps in the process now are for the council to receive the plat to, and refer it to the Plan Commission and City Engineer for their review and comment. If you do that tonight, we anticipate it will be on Plan Commission Agenda next Monday, and you will get the report of the Plan Commission and City Engineer at the meeting on the 18th. On that agenda, we would ask for final council approval of the plat. And basically that authorizes us to go ahead and file it with the Register of Deeds. I also will have for your consideration that night, a resolution authorizing a deed conveying the 26 lots to the Community Development Authority of the city, consistent with what we did in Phases One and Two, so the CDA can engage in the marketing and sale of those lots. With the understanding that our goal is to cover the debt service on the borrowing for this infrastructure, primarily from lot sales. Council agreed to some subsidy, if you will, on some of the stormwater features, but the goal is that lot sales, at least recoup the infrastructure cost. The good news is I continue to hear from contractors and the current listing realtor for Phase One and Two, that there's, there's interest out there and there are people that want to get their contracts in place for lots in Phase Three.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion then to refer this to the Plan Commission and City Engineer for review and recommendation. Thank you, Bonnie. Second by Bill. Any council discussion? Seeing none. This will be a voice vote. So all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Onto C, consideration of letter of agreement with Blue Heron Condominium Association pertaining to fall leaf collection from private streets in that development for 2024 only. This is an interim agreement pending finalization of a 10-year service agreement. Greg?
Yes. As, as Mr. Tagan from the Blue Heron Board addressed earlier, we've been meeting sporadically on an agreement for a limited package of services that the city would provide to the Blue Heron condo association, all of which are services that are paid for out of user fees that apply to that, that condo association, just like the rest of us for property owners. We still are, we still have that issue, I guess I'd say, one provision about video inspection of the sewers. So that agreement isn't quite ready for prime time. We did talk about it some at Personnel and Finance last week, as Adam reported. Think we made some progress. But in the meantime, the leaves have either fallen or are still falling from the trees. The folks from Blue Heron's Board that were at Personnel and Finance said, geez, could we at least have the city pick up our leaves this fall? That committee's consensus was, well, if we can have an agreement that gives the city some protection on, on the liability front, perhaps that's possible. With the assistance of our city attorneys, we have what's in front of you right now, subject to review and approval by the Blue Heron folks, because we got it this afternoon, which not bad for government from Thursday night to Monday afternoon. But I would recommend approval of this interim agreement, which is just for the balance of 2024, only for leaf collection and contains most of the same language protective of the city that was in the larger agreement that's been in front of council.
Greg, I believe number three addresses our concern why we wanted to bring it.
Right. The, the thought is, you know, if the city's going on to private property, the private roadways within the association, there should be a hold harmless against claims. roadways within the association, there should be a hold harmless against claims, providing there's not any negligent, provided the city's not negligent in its actions. So this basically allows city dump trucks with vacuum units attached to roll down the private streets of Blue Heron and collect leaves from anywhere within six feet of the pavement, pretty much the same way we do it in every other traditional neighborhood with public streets in town. You know, nothing has ever prohibited Blue Heron from raking all of their leaves to Riverview Drive. That would be quite an exercise. So this, this gets the collection activity internal on their private streets.
Yep. So we're looking for a motion to authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Thank you, Mark. Do we have a second by Darla? Any council discussion? See none. This will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Patriot. Bonnie Schimmelunis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, for information only.
We already covered it, but I would note again, Personnel and Finance, if you, if you stay a little bit longer, you can be here for your eight o'clock meeting tomorrow to review fire and EMS budget Wednesday night. Video interviews with two firms or city manager consultants. I think we added some budget related stuff, just in case you still have energy for that one. I'll make good on my promise to buy pizza for that meeting. And then joint Personnel and Finance Committee with the Public Utilities Committee for some heavy duty review on the utilities budgets Thursday night, 6 PM back in this room. The utility heads can buy the pizza for that one. Regular council meeting on the 18th, and then of course, the work session and budget hearing on November 25th. We do have a closed session with several topics listed tonight. I don't anticipate action on reconvening in, in open, other than to adjourn for the evening, but would request council, maybe after a short break, consider going into closed.
Okay. So a closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin Stats 19.851E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required a closed session. Discuss property acquisition matters. Tonight, there are four things. Discuss property sales matters for industrial park property. Discuss possible assistance to development projects. Discuss matters pertaining to agreement for sale of the real estate with Why Not LLC at 2023 Washington Street. And discuss property acquisition matters. Looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Bill. Second by Shannon. Any council discussion? See none. This will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Tim Patriot. Bonnie Schimmelunis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Hosky.
I guess, yeah.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Yes.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.